Yeah.
It's good.
I just don't know.
Yeah.
It's called coconut water.
Okay. Anything coconut.
Calling to order the November seventeenth, twenty twenty five meeting of the Beacon City School District Board of Education. Uh, do we stand for, I'm sorry, do we stand for the pledge and then go to executive session or we go to executive session right away?
Let's get it done.
All right, let's stand and pledge.
Yeah.
We stand for the pledge. I put.
Legitimately.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, Vicki, can you call and roll?
Here.
Ms. Emerson?
Here.
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 Ms. Here?
Here.
Ms. Devlin?
Here. Um, Matt, can you review the fire exits?
Exits are in the back of the L G I.
Okay, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session? Um, we, to discuss the employment, um, history of particular individual, we plan to return in thirty minutes approximately.
So moved.
On second. Second base center, all in favor?
Aye.
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 We are back. We are going to start now with our open to the public section. Does anybody have a public comment they would like to make? Go for it.
Thank you, board members. My name is Ozzie Albright. I'm the supervisor of the Town of Fishkill. Around June 5th, the Town of Fishkill will be trying to acquire Dutch's Stadium for a 250th anniversary for the Revolutionary War. Half the district is in the Town of Fishkill. I'm a graduate of Beacon High School in 1984. Three of my children are already graduating. I've got another one in the pipeline. So I'd like to know if the board would like to be interested in cooperating with the Town of Fishkill and inviting some students to read some of our important documents that I see on the outside wall over there. It should be about a three-hour program. I'm going to split this with Beacon and the Whoppersboro Central School District, which is the northeastern quadrant of the Town of Fishkill. And I'd like to just inquire to see if you guys have any interest in participating in this event.
What is the date of it?
I think it's going to be Friday, June 5th, at Dutch's Stadium. So we're going to read some documents, maybe get the school bands, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, celebrate. At the last, we read some of the important documents leading up to the Declaration of Independence. Declaration of Independence would be last, when it gets dark, and then we're going to have a nice fireworks display, and that'll be the end of it. So if you guys are interested in that, you guys can talk about it later. I'll leave the superintendent my business card, and I look forward to you guys participating in the event.
Great. Thank you for the invitation. Thank you. Does anybody else have a public comment they would like to make?
Yes. I totally knew that. Thanks, Laura.
Hi, everybody. I'm Kate Burksmith. I'm the co-chair of the Foundation for Beacon Schools, and I'm here with Bard Fisher, who's the co-head of our educator grant committee. So I'm not going to take a lot of your time. I just wanted to bring you up to speed on this year's round of educator grants that we have just awarded. So this year, we have, obviously, you know, with your approval, awarded 12 grants for a combination of $15,555. It's a nice number. I like all the fives. And I just want to take a minute to acknowledge the 12 educators and their programs that they applied for, and then that's all I've got to say. So at Glenham, we have Hernandez, I practiced this, Moranhali, for creating purposeful and inclusive sensory spaces for emotional regulation. At Sargent, we have Catherine Biorde with the DIY Ball Run. At South Ave, we have Sheila Griffin for a fiber arts studio. At Rombaut, we have a few. We have Marissa Benson for the Radio City Music Hall eighth-grade chorus performance. I know, it's good. Katie Oriani with Sweet Success Math Meets the Candy Business. Amanda Tarant with the Kindness Club. Then Sergio Perez got one. That's a Beacon High School and a Rombaut one. So that's visiting artist workshops with the Rollout Project. Dawn Clemens at Beacon High School for an AP US History trip to Philadelphia. Carol Anne Delbenne with the Outdoor Adventure Activities. Anthony Skarone for a new technology program, and Maria Van Houten for a ceramics workshop. So that's what we're going to be funding this school year. And if you guys have any questions for me, otherwise, you can always reach me, you know, email, supermarket, whatever.
Do you know how much money has come in on the snacks fund, Snacks for Success fundraiser?
Great question. Thanks, Dr. Lindau. So we did start a Snacks for Success campaign a week and a half ago, and we're already over our goal of $1,500 for that. So we will be getting that money to the schools. Teachers and educators can spend that on snacks for students, so people can grab a snack whenever they're hungry. And some of the donations are recurring, so we're hoping that this will be a fund that will continue to keep replenishing these snacks and not just be a one-time fundraising effort.
Thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome. It's our pleasure.
I just have to say, the, I mean, obviously, the grants have become a yearly, a yearly tradition, and it's amazing what you're all able to fund. But I just have to give just a big shout out to the foundation, because the snacks thing came about so fast. And like the week earlier, I was talking with all the principals about how do we do this, and how can we raise money, and, you know, and then they just sent me an email, like, we want to do this, let's meet. And like, 24 hours later, you guys were already collecting money, so. And that, and we will set up an account that principals, I think we're kind of targeting social workers and principals in each of the schools to be the main people with it, that we, you know, whether it's going to Walmart or somewhere else, to kind of get the snack closet in a school, or like the snack supply in a school, like, well, shelves. But anyway, that was just really cool that you guys came through that quickly on that, and thank you for that.
Really glad we could do it. It's our pleasure. Anything else I can help you guys with?
You've done a lot.
Thank you for your time, and thanks for everything you guys do.
Thank you so much for that bright spot of good news. That was awesome. Does anybody else have a public comment that they would like to make? Okay, good. So we are ending on a high note. That's great. Okay, so we will move on to our workshop tonight. We're starting with our Beacon High School presentation with Principal Dwyer.
Good evening again. So thanks for having us here tonight. Just a few folks from our team, Kate Taschman and Tom O'Neill, our two assistant principals. Sharon Morales, our guidance coordinators here, Rob Walls, our head custodian, and then, you know, Christina and Leslie. Christina is also a teacher up here at the high school. Okay, so I'm gonna, I have, you know, not a ton of information on here, but if there's anything that you'd like me to go in more detail in, I'm happy to take questions as we go through or at the end. I'll try to be mindful of time. I feel like I could talk about our school for a while, but I'm going to focus on just some data points, so graduation, Regents exams, and AP exams from last year. And then I'll just share some numbers about our enrollment for CTI, our AP and dual enrollment programs, and then the academic support that we offer. And then I'll talk a bit about culture of care. I'll talk in detail about rights, and this will be the first kind of official update that you get since we started that program, and then any questions that you have. So this is just some quick data points. We have 830 students, 145 faculty and staff. Of our 830 students, we have 155 students with disabilities and 27 students with, students who are English learners. And then you see the breakdown of our faculty and staff. The pictures on the upper right-hand corner is our math department, who all dressed up, I think, for Halloween. So that was that. We're trying to just kill the trend, like, so if we just keep doing it, and maybe not cool, then maybe the students will stop doing it. Samantha Veltre and Karen Hogan were featured in, they do a financial math class together, and they were featured in a blog post by the company that we use the curriculum for, so that was their picture. And then we have a few of our clerical unit members in the bottom right-hand corner. Here's our graduation data from last year. The pictures are all of our seniors who graduated. So our official graduation rate is 91.3%. So the state sort of official graduation rate is the 2021 total cohort, so the students who entered high school in 2021. And then the graduation rate as of August 2025. So all of our seniors who graduated, 188 of them had graduated in June, and then we had one August graduate, which is what counts towards our official graduation rate. So 189 graduates, 79 of them earned their advanced regent diploma, 103 earned a regent diploma. Seven students earned a local diploma. Those are students with IEPs. From this cohort, we have 11 students who are still enrolled and hopefully finishing their graduation requirement this year. And then over the course of the four years, we had seven students drop out. Pictures, Avery and Lila, they were the two student athletes we recognized at the section I breakfast last year. The middle picture is of some of our students on college signing day last year, May 1st. And then the bottom picture is, I think we're at Forestal, like when our seniors did the walkthrough before their graduation with the Forestal students. Our region data is here. So I'll talk a little bit about some of the changes. So over the past couple of years, the state standards have shifted. So in 2324, Algebra I standard transitioned from Common Core to NGSS. We took a little bit of a hit in our algebra scores that year. They went up a bit last year. The caveat, I'll note, for both algebra and biology, that this does not include the eighth graders who took those exams. And so last year at Rombaut, around 70 students took the Algebra I regions, and the same number took the Biology regions. All of the students passed Algebra, and all but one student passed Biology. So these percentages do not include that. So the district percentage for Algebra I and Bio are a little bit higher. These are our mainly ninth graders who took these exams last year. Geometry was a, with the course that transitioned to NGSS last year, our geometry scores dipped from like high 50s to just under 50% last year. We were disappointed by those scores. Made a couple of adjustments around teaching assignments, curriculum, standard alignment. We know that that's an area of improvement for this year. Algebra II went up a bit last year. ELA went up, that the 87% is the highest percentage of students who passed that we've had. Global and US history are roughly consistent with where they've been. Biology and Earth Science are both two exams that underwent significant changes last year. There was a lot of media attention, especially around Earth and Space Sciences, around the rigor of those exams. This is something that Dr. Rudisender, O'Neill, and I talk about a lot, but, you know, the reading level of like the Biology exam, for example, went from maybe like a sixth or seventh grade reading level when it was living environment to like a 10th grade reading level for the Biology exam now. So our students who struggle with literacy struggled on those exams. The 53% pass rate for Bio was exactly the same as the previous pass rate for Living Environment in 2324. Earth and Space Sciences actually went up about 10 points from the previous year, which was a pleasant surprise, given the, how rigorous the exam was. Chemistry improved from last year, and then physics went down by a couple of percentage points. So these are all students who got a 65 or higher. Students with IEPs, you know, they have what's called a safety net, so they need a 55 in order to pass these exams, so that's not included in this. And then there are a few other kind of permutations, low-pass safety net for students with IEPs can get a 52 or 54, so they can meet graduation requirements. So there's a bunch of different options for it, but this is just strictly the pass rate. And so, you know, we were happy to see some improvements. We've always been pretty strong, relatively strong in the humanities. I think math has been an area of focus for us, as it has been for the district. So we were glad to see Algebra II scores go up, but geometry is certainly an area of focus. And then the only other thing I'll say about region scores is that, you know, the sort of required exams are effectively Algebra I, Bio, ELA, and then one or both of the histories. So the other exams, like geometry, Algebra II, different districts kind of handle that differently. In some cases, districts don't have students sit for the exam unless they are confident they're going to pass, because they're not required exam. We generally don't follow that approach. Like, if a student has chosen to take the region class, we encourage them to take the exam if they're pursuing the advanced regent diploma. But that's one of the reasons why sometimes we see, you know, 100% pass rates for Algebra II. It doesn't necessarily mean that every, you know, 11th grade student at that school is proficient in Algebra II. It refers to the percentage of students that actually took the exam. Just some notes on regions. Our AP scores were pretty exceptionally strong last year. So in each of these, so we had a number of students self-study for around six or seven additional exams. These are the courses that we offer. So I'm not including the students who self-studied for statistics, or calc, or psychology. These are just the classes that we offer. For all of our AP classes, our students outperformed the state and the global average. And in several of them, you know, with the highest pass rate we've ever had. I mean, US History, 86%. Biology, really need to give a shout out to Laura Thomas, a 96% pass rate on what's widely considered one of the hardest AP exams. And AP Bio is also one of our more popular AP classes, where we have around 50 students taking that test. So our AP scores were strong last year. And then just a few numbers. So you've seen this before, just the specific program that our students are enrolled in at the Duchess Bosie's Career and Technical Institute. So this year, we have 22 seniors who are in their second year of a CTI program. We have students represented in each of these programs listed here. 32 juniors, and then we have six students in Bard Early College. This is not through Duchess Bosie's CTI, but this is, they take the CTI bus up to the Bosie's campus, and then they take Bard College classes at, at the CTI campus, and they earn Bard College credit. So we had three juniors do the program last year. They've all continued in the program this year. We have three juniors doing their first year of Bard Early College. It's a program that's really geared toward students who are very interested and strong in the humanities. So they take their English and history requirements at, through Bard, earn Bard College credit, and then they take like their math and their sciences and electives here in the morning. And then just some numbers around AP and dual enrollment. So you've seen the classes before. We have 326 AP enrollments, obviously not 326 students in AP classes, because many of them, including a couple of our students here, take multiple of those classes, so 326 enrollments total, and then 522 enrollments for DCC. I know, you know, the board has focused a lot on, you know, a few years ago, on the tuition at DCC, which we thought was going to result in a decrease in enrollment. We really haven't seen that. I think most students and families still see it as a cost-effective option, given that they're paying, you know, one-third of a rate that they will eventually be paying in a few years. There are some opportunities. Dr. Landau, Ms. Corderoni, and I met last week with, with Bosie's, and they have a coser that some districts have started exploring, and that allows districts to cover the cost of DCC enrollment and get state aid back for the teacher salaries. So there are some districts who have participated in this coser that have actually, like, sort of made money on that process. And so that's something that we're looking into, and certainly something we'd be really interested in being able to do for the future. And then just want to quickly highlight some academic support. So, you know, one of the things that we're always thinking about are students who need additional support passing the Regents exams that don't need to graduate. And then also our ninth grade students, just in general, like here, as in everywhere, there's a big difference between middle school and high school. And so we concentrate a lot of our academic support around our ninth graders. So we have 11 students enrolled in a freshman seminar class, which is kind of like a study skills class, through which they can earn a half-credit for elective. Our English and math labs are support classes for students who are identified by their middle school teachers as being in need of support to access the ninth grade curriculum. So for math lab, it, the students who are taking Algebra A or Algebra Regent this year, English lab, students who are taking English IX, those are non-credit-bearing classes that they receive additional support for. We're piloting this year. This was SAGI's recommendation. It's been really helpful for us. We're piloting an intervention curriculum in the English lab class through Hewitt Mifflin. It's called Read 180. It's an electronic program that meets students kind of where they are on level, and then kind of rapidly remediates their literacy skills. So we've seen some improvement with that. We're exploring a similar program for math lab for next year. And then we, and I guess just anecdotally, one thing I'll say about these classes, especially English lab and math lab, and then also our AS classes, the nine-period day is particularly helpful in terms of us being able to offer those classes. Under an eight-period day, you know, a lot of the students who might need support are also the students who might also be undercredited or at risk of becoming undercredited through failed classes. So with an eight-period day, there's not always a ton of room in the schedule to give them non-credit-bearing classes that they could use to support in Algebra or English, because we have to get them credit-bearing classes to keep them on track for graduation. So the nine-period day gives us some additional flexibility, where students can still earn six or even seven credits while also getting a period or two of non-credit-bearing support. six or even seven credits while also getting a period or two of non-credit bearing support. So that's where the nine-period day has been particularly helpful for us. And then that last column is regions AIS classes. So we offer an AIS specifically for students who are still in need of passing either algebra, biology, global and US. We combine them into one class or ELA. And so those are semester-long classes with the idea being that those students will retake the regions in January, hopefully pass, and then they can move into semester-long elective in the spring. And then the last thing that we did, one of the new things that we did are, are summer workshops. We had 57 students who attended one of two summer workshops last summer. We did it through a company called Elevate Education, who had been recommended to me by somebody through Bocce's. So the first program was a summer bridge program for rising ninth grade students. I think the feedback from the, both the students and the facilitator was really positive on that one. They focused a lot on the academic skill that students would need going into high school. We also did a workshop for our students who were entering 10th through 12th grade and specifically those who were interested in taking DCC or AP classes. I didn't receive as strong a feedback from students about that workshop. Some of them felt, especially the older students, like it was, the content was a little bit kind of basic for them. And so we are thinking about how to expand like the ninth grade program specifically. Just doing like a crash course in academic skills before ninth graders enter high school. So that way, that transition isn't as stark for them. And then I just want to talk briefly about a couple of areas and sort of the culture of care domain. So I'm really grateful to the board and of course, Dr. Landau and his team for the support of the Bright program. This is something that we've been interested in for a few years, since Heather first introduced it to me three years ago. So we have 10 students who have participated in Bright so far this year, two of them following mental health-related hospitalization, four students who have experienced significant mental health-related school avoidance, and then four students returning from a medical hospitalization. So the process that we follow for entry into the Bright program, we have students of concern teams. So I meet bi-weekly with all of the administrators, guidance counselors, social workers and psychologists. We're all in one room together for 45 minutes and we look at attendance data, behavior data, any referrals from teachers to identify students who might be in need of more support. And so that typically how we would identify a student who is not attending the school and the reason for that might be school anxiety. So we identify those students. We have a pretty regimented entry process that involves meeting with the student and the parent, developing a contract for them to sign before they join Bright. And there is an attendance requirement for that. So, you know, we ask the student to commit to attending Bright for a certain length of time. And we also try to make sure that it's a student that is interested in returning to school full-time. This is not like an alternative option for a student to just kind of stay on Bright forever. The explicit kind of stated goal of this program is always to reintegrate students back into a full-day schedule. So we have two staff members. I'm going to share some feedback about them on the next slide. Jenny Kaplan, she's our social worker, and then Caitlin Holder, the teaching assistant. They work really closely with the students and the families to reintegrate students back into school. So for example, a student who might be stepping down from Westchester Medical where they were hospitalized for a mental health reason, they'll, you know, have their entry meeting and maybe spend initially the first two or three days in the Bright room all day. So Ms. Holder, the academic coordinator, is developing a work tracker, listing all their assignments. They're just checking off, getting caught up on schoolwork. And then gradually over the next few days, maybe we'll say, okay, you're going to be in Bright from period one through four, and then we're going to try and have you go to period five and six today and see how that is. And, you know, a few days later, maybe it's half a day back in the classroom and then eventually after a couple of weeks, a full day in the classroom. And so consistently trying to increase their independence and then get to the point where they can kind of graduate from Bright. They're always able to stop by and see Ms. Kaplan for counseling or check in with Ms. Holder, but really the goal is to get the students back in the class. And these are just some points of feedback from parents. I'll just stay on this for a minute for you to read this. And I really want to shout out Ms. Kaplan and Ms. Holder. They've done a really great job. You know, when we were hiring for this position last year, after one of our social workers resigned, you know, we had a feel, we knew that this person was going to step into the Bright clinical coordinator role. And so I really wanted somebody who had strong clinical experience because they're providing counseling to students who have some of the more significant mental health challenges in the school, but also somebody who can kind of work with like a brand-new program and mold it into something. And Jenny had done a really great job with that and so has Caitlin. And it's been, it's been something that we've been really proud of at the school. So thank you all for your support. And then just in the culture of care domain, I've talked about restorative practices a bit over the past couple of years, just to kind of share what we do on a more formal level. You know, we've seen a really significant decline in conflicts in school and that's intentional. A lot of people working really hard on that. So I mentioned the bi-weekly students of concern meeting. We also meet the admin team along with Michelle Santiago, Juan Hammond, and Gajji Manderson, who are our three main point people for restorative practices. We meet every other week. This is where we'll talk about, hey, these two students have issues. We heard some, there was a drama, some drama on social media. I mean, this is where we kind of divide up and say, all right, who's going to mediate? Who's going to get involved with trying to restore the relationships? We have a team of teachers who are restorative practice facilitators. They meet every two weeks with Ms. Santiago and Mr. Hammond for restorative practices training. And then we've gotten them involved with facilitating, facilitating some of the peer mediations. A lot of them also have ISS duty in the in-school suspension room. And we've done that intentionally to try to make the ISS space a bit less punitive and more of a space for students to reflect on the choices that led to them being in that room. And then I just have a quote here from Michelle. Our extracurriculars in our athletics, in the right, there's at least one familiar face there. So our esports team, Roman, Macio, and then their advisor, Mrs. Alvarez. I believe they won first place in a couple of different tournaments last year. So they go up to Contender Esports on Route Nine. Esports is a really great program. Christina Alvarez did a great job with it. Stella and Farah, they were two of the students representing Flag Football, which was a club that they founded. Last year, this was them at back-to-school night. And then our Unified Sports Team, Unified Bachi at the pep rally this year. And we've talked about this kind of outlandish, you hear about, you know, you, you see the presentations. I just kind of want to recap this specifically because our SEAL Civic Readiness Program has gotten a lot of recognition recently. We were asked to present last year's Dutch County School Boards Association meeting. So Dawn Clemens, Erin Hadlen presented that. We had 72 students, so almost half of our senior class earned the SEAL Civic Readiness last year for a bunch of different projects. So in the first set, those are participatory budgeting projects that our students received funding for through, or that the city of Beacon agreed to fund based on the idea that our students had and the presentation that they made at city council meetings. And then some of our in-school projects below. Erin, Dawn, and I met with Dr. Landau, Ms. Cordaroni, and Ms. Adler at the beginning of the year. And we're hoping to establish a similar participatory budgeting fund for the school district for the students' ideas. I just want to shout out one of our students, Farhana Antora, she's in 12th grade. She had the idea of recycling unused fruits and vegetables and prepackaged materials from the cafeteria. So in order for a meal to be reimbursed under federal guidelines, there have to be certain component parts of that meal. So that might include like a bag of carrots or a banana or something. And the students have to take that and the cafeteria can't take it back once it's been given to them. So that has led to a lot of waste in the past where students weren't going to eat the bag of carrots, so they just throw them out. So we set up, we worked with food services and also with Fairground to set up bins in the cafeteria. And we have NHS students, every period, bring the recycled food that hasn't been opened or, you know, touched to another fridge in the building. And then at the end of the week, they package it all together. We've only been doing this for a few weeks and Farhana told me the other day that they've donated 500 items to Fairground so far. So that, again, is just a student idea and she's done pretty much all of the work for it, which is really impressive. Upper right-hand corner, Lola, Annabelle and Grace, they advocated for student planners, which we were able to buy for them this year. Willa Freeman, she graduated last year. She spoke in front of the Traffic Safety Commission about some dangerous intersections in Beacon. Cielsa Woods, if you have not had a chance to go up to the second floor B-ring, Cielsa also graduated last year. She's an exceptionally talented artist. It's kind of hard to like describe how good this mural is, so I encourage you to check it out. It's really, really neat. And then the last picture down there is all of our students who presented at the city council meeting last year. They're presenting again on December 8th this year. And then I just wanted to highlight some of the capital project work that's taken place. So the six pictures in the middle here are all from our media studio. So the equipment and the space are all new. And then the two pictures on the right, the top one is in Carmen Finton's room, the middle one is in Susan Blumer's room. Those are new science labs. What's great about this is that both Carmen and Susan teach special education. So in the past, those students who are in special class of Biology or Earth and Space Science would need to go to another room for lab, but now their classroom bases have access to those same resources. So that's great. And then this was obviously not a capital project, but we are appreciative of the improvement that we're seeing in our library. That's all I have. I'm happy to answer any question. These are our seniors on the day of the pep rally outside. Dawn, Stella came in to do a class photo for the yearbook.
It's a great picture. Thank you so much for this presentation. There's so, there are so many positive things happening, but I also appreciate like a really clear breakdown of the numbers at the beginning, so we can sort of understand where everybody's at. Does anybody have any questions about the presentation that they would like to ask?
I just had a couple of questions. So definitely echoing, there's a lot of amazing stuff in this presentation. Thank you for sharing it so clearly. The first question, there's nothing about cell phones in here. To me, that's good news, but like, can you speak for just a couple of seconds about how the new cellphone changes are just being adopted by the student body?
Yeah, it's good news that I didn't have to talk about it too much. Yeah, I was, you know, nervous about it all summer. And then we came in, the students have been great with it. You know, we're on them, like if we see a phone, we take it. And so every day, we're still collecting some phones. We get virtually no pushback from students. They kind of understand the deal, but phones have gone really well. Teachers are really happy about it. So no complaints from me at this point.
Thanks, that's great. And then my second question is just a little bit about kind of what happens after high school. So I'm both curious on the numbers side, and if we don't have all this tonight, that's okay. But on the numbers side, like how many kids are going to four-year colleges, two-year colleges, other pathways? And, and then just not on the numbers side, just about how they're feeling, like how prepared do we feel like those kids are for kind of the pathway they're pursuing after graduation?
Sure. I don't have numbers. I would say, I could certainly get them for you. Anecdotally, I would say probably about half of our students go to four-year colleges, maybe 60%, 20 to 30% that go to community college, and then 10%. Sharon, I think my estimates are probably pretty accurate, 10%, you know, military straight into the workforce. I think level of preparation, I think it varies. I think that we have some students who are, you know, are and feel really well-prepared. We have some students who, you know, they matriculate into college and then, you know, we see that they're transferring at the end of that first year to a school that's closer to their home. It might be because they didn't feel as though they were academically ready. It might just be homesickness or things like that. I think that, you know, we really try to encourage students to take challenging classes here, not so much to earn the college credit, but so that they can get a better understanding of what a college-level class will be like. And generally, we see that students who take and are successful in our AP or DCC classes, you know, they are able to apply to and get into more competitive colleges, but they also tend to be a little bit more successful there. Yeah, so, you know, we have a strong senior class this year and some very competitive schools. This is a stressful time for them right now as they're applying for it. But, you know, we're excited for, you know, some of the schools that we see them getting into, but always kind of thinking about how to make sure that, one, we're tracking, but two, we're doing everything we can to make sure that they make it through all four years of college.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I was just wondering like what results you've seen with the addition of like this, the academic support classes?
Great question. So mixed bag. I think some AIS classes tend to be really successful. Like last year, for example, we had 15 students in AIS Living Environment with Ms. Finton. 12 of them, that was in the fall of 2024, 12 of those 15 passed the Living Environment regions in January, which was great. Some of the classes, it takes a little bit more time. We don't have, you know, we have a higher pass rate for like English, for example, which sometimes mean that the students who didn't pass English on the first try need a really intensive level of support to, to kind of get over that, that hump. And that includes like students who, you know, for whom English might not be the first language or, or something. But I think generally we find them helpful, but like anything, you know, we do need students to understand the importance of those classes also. So we're also always trying to motivate them, hey, even though you're not earning credit for it, showing up for this AIS Algebra class when you're a senior and you could have late arrival is still really beneficial to you. Good question.
That's great, thank you.
You don't have to rank these and, but what are some thoughts you have about any budget initiatives from small to big for next year?
The wish list. So, you know, we've thought a lot about, I think to your point, Chris, about like college and career readiness. So, you know, we're seeing from students, our guidance counselors have just an enormous amount on their plate at like all times. So like right now, or, you know, September and October, when our students are transitioning into high school, that's also the time that our seniors are applying to college. So counselors are constantly split between, how do I help this ninth grader, you know, acclimate to high school? And how do I write the 50 letters of recommendation for my seniors that I need to do, you know, by a certain deadline? So we think a lot about that space, especially like the college and career readiness support we could provide to students before senior year. Like I think that our counselors do some work in their individual meetings with students in freshman, sophomore, and junior year. But there are times when students have expressed a desire for more intensive support around like the college search process or understanding financially things before they reach senior year. So we think a lot about some additional capacity in like the guidance office for that. If I had to pick one thing, that would probably be at the top of the list.
Anybody else?
Corey mentioned it, but I just want to reiterate, we're, we're very interested in doing this coser where the district would take over paying the DCC, the tuition for the DCC classes, but the aid we would get back would basically end up paying for it. There's a small handful of districts that kind of piloted it this year, and so we're super interested in joining in on that. I think it just makes sense all around to do. So, so that's, that's another thing. And I'm going to totally embarrass Dr. Dwyer by mentioning this, but he, because he's a super humble person, but he completed his dissertation fairly recently and it was selected. His dissertation was part of a proposal, so he's going to be presenting at like a symposium at the American Education, the American Educational Researchers Association, which is not a fluff thing at all. That's like the, probably the highest scholarly conference that you could attend. To counterbalance that, I've never gone or been invited my entire life. So, so I'm not kind of on the opposite end of that in terms of dissertations, but that's just something that he probably would never mention, but I just wanted to take that chance to, that's a huge honor.
Thank you, everybody, I appreciate it.
Can we know what the subject?
Sorry?
What, what the subject was for?
Oh yeah, actually Chloe was a student that I interviewed for my dissertation last year. So I looked at the participation rates in our AP classes for Black and Hispanic students specifically and ways to make the representation of our AP classes look a little bit more like the representation of our student body. And ways to make the representation of our AP classes look a little bit more like the representation of our student body.
That's great. I like that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
Okay. Our second workshop tonight is part of our ongoing discussion about having an SRO in the district. So Matt is going to talk about what that would mean.
Cory's slides were just beautiful and these are not. I'm going to go through them pretty quickly. So the last time we spoke about school security stuff, I just kind of did an overview of what we're currently doing in the district, like how we deal with everything. I'm gonna, I'm not going to dwell on these. I kind of just want to provide a baseline of information. The board had a bunch of questions about SRO, so I went, some of this is just from talking with folks, but a lot of it is from the, from the the literature around SROs. So just briefly, just in terms of background. Eight, eight years ago, in my first year here in Beacon, the city had the possibility, City Beacon had the possibility to access a grant that would allow for an SRO to be half-funded through the grant and then half-funded through the district. When we were exploring that, there was a lot of public input during that time. A large portion of it was negative towards or, you know, not, not supportive of having an SRO in the district. And so right around that time is when we, or I developed the idea for the Director of Security. The district-wide director of security position, which Mark Thomas has had for the last seven and a half years. And so, and so like I, I'm sharing that just because that's part of kind of my development with this. The two districts I've worked in in New York, both are city, small city school districts. Neither of them have had SRO. So I don't, I'm, you know, not personally opposed to having an SRO. I just am sharing that background simply to share why, like I kind of, in twenty seventeen, I, I sort of, you know, received that feedback and developed this model that we currently have. And, and that model, I've said, you know, several times in board meetings, I feel we provide a high level of safety with the model that we currently have as well. So that said, I'm just going to kind of quickly go through these slides. I'm not the expert. This is from the principal or guidelines for school resource officers. It's from the National, National Association of School Resource Officers. I'm going to stop saying that, but it's about a twenty-page document. It's really well put together. I think it was created in twenty twenty-one by the Department of Justice. You can find it on this National Association of School Resource Officer website. Unfortunately, it is, it appears that it's been taken, taken down off the DOJ website under the current administration, but I think it has a really good sort of view of the role. So these are the, what they identify as the four roles and responsibilities. Crime prevention and education, emergency manager, law enforcement problem solver and informal counselor. Sorry, I'm going to be sharing these guidelines and then at the end discuss the overlap between overlap and differences between SRO and Director of Security. So just back, those are the four main parts of the role. And then a key part of this in their guidelines for the role are that prior to implementation, you receive just a lot of feedback from a cross-section of the community. And that if you do implement SRO, that there's a feedback mechanism that's kind of continual that people can share how they feel it's going. This is probably the most crucial part of it in a sense, creating a memo of understanding, an MOU with the agency that you're partnering with for having an SRO. I say this is the most important part because like a lot of the things we talk about, like could even be gathering feedback or how the person is selected. All of those things usually reside in the MOU and it's pretty time-consuming. But super important thing to do. I'm not going to go through every single one of those. But most of it would be hammered out. Our participating agency would be the City of Beacon. We have not entered any sort of conversation with them. They're aware that these conversations are having, but we're not going to engage in that until if it became a more clear direction. This is one of the questions that came from the board. So this was part of these guidelines. SRO should not be involved in disciplining students. They should not be involved in incidents that don't pose a threat to school safety. And this is the language I just basically lifted off that. Any matter that would require, that would not require a school to call nine-one-one is something that's outside the scope. That of course doesn't mean, I'm going to go back to this. It, it doesn't mean that SROs aren't interacting with students all day. Like that's a huge part of their job. It's just questions came up about, well, like when do they engage in something that's happening in terms of like a disciplinary thing? The guidelines I think are pretty clear about that in terms of the overwhelming majority of times they don't. That's something that school administration currently handles and would continue to handle. And then this, I'm not going to read these. I also pulled this, but it's also like a best practice for this is the judicious use of law enforcement powers, which means really only when absolutely necessary are they, you know, restraining a student, placing a student in custody, those types of things, you know? We, we obviously, I talked about the last meeting, we engage with the police around some of our large events, like they're at some of our big games. And some of our other large event things, we typically for those, for at least some of the officers here, we pay overtime for Beacon Police to be at these events. But we also have to call them, you know, during occasional school days for support. Typically more at the high school and middle school than anywhere else. But those are issues that an SRO would be like right here on scene to help us deal with. Could be conflict between parents. Or it could be something that involves, that's something that goes a little bit beyond our code of conduct that we need to consult with the police on. The hiring process, so back to the MOU, this, how someone would be selected would be part of the MOU. So I think I've heard so many different ways that so many districts do this. Lot, some, in some places, the school district doesn't have a lot of say in who they get. It's just someone who's been trained. And then in some districts, there's like a lot of involvement on the school side about who gets selected. Obviously, this is purely hypothetical. If we went down this road about how it worked with the City of Beacon, but they just recommended in the document that you have a really clear selection process. So obviously someone with experience, someone with a commitment to working with children and a lot of stakeholder involvement. It is, it is clear in all of these arrangements that supervision of the person is with the law enforcement agency. The supervisor should be trained along with the SRO so they understand the role. But these reviews should incorporate a lot of input from the school. This is just clear, like anytime if there was an SRO in a building, you should be really clear and track if they do have to engage with a student. When I talked about having to restrain or place a student in physical custody, that should be a data piece that's tracked really clearly. That would be in the MOU. I'm not going to read through this list. Actually, this is just a sample in the document. If you looked at it, there's probably thirty different things that an SRO should be trained in according to this document, but these are just some of the more basic ones. But it really emphasized to have someone, if you do this role, to have someone who's received a high level of training. And then just, it talked about if this is something a district undertakes, there should be a lot of engagement, student families. I think that's been part of some of the feedback we've already heard. If this is something that we do and that the review of the program should be on an annual basis. So just quickly, this is not a comprehensive list either, but I wanted to just kind of highlight. Some of the questions came up before about, well, we currently have a Director of Security. What are some of the things our, our Director, Mark Thomas does? And Mark does a lot, and this is just kind of some of the things that an SRO wouldn't do. So quickly, an SRO in any district is involved in the building emergency planning, so they're always on that team. And, and this may differ by district. Mark plays a little bit different role as he makes sure with L-Terrors that everything is complete. Like he kind of makes sure the document is ready for both the board and the state. And at least just talking with other districts, a lot of times the SRO is on the team and offers a lot of input, but they may not have that role in getting it completely ready for the state. The Director of Security here supervises school security staff. Another thing our Director does is serves district legal paperwork to families. It's not exclusively him. We have other security staff that also do that. So that could be discipline paperwork and stuff like that, but we provide service to homes for that, also responsible for the key maintenance and security. Probably the thing that I couldn't figure out how to exactly say it. But something that Mark does is, you know, answer, answer phone calls on Friday night at ten o'clock or Saturday afternoon or, you know, Sunday morning at two in the morning, like Mark's kind of on call twenty-four seven to consult with us on things that come up regarding something outside of school, something that impacts school. And then he consults with local law enforcement. And SRO certainly maybe could do that, although I think probably they're less twenty-four seven and more we would be directly, if we didn't have a Director of Security, for whatever reason, we'd be directly calling BPD or the town of Fishkill. But Mark just provides just Friday night. We were talking with Mark about an issue. And so there's, it's a lot of things bubble up on the weekends. And so we're always just in contact with him. And then here's where there's some overlap. Obviously, an SRO would be a liaison with the rest of the police force. You know, the Director of Security currently does that. You know, an SRO would also, you know, help us plan large athletic or community events in terms of security, which is what our Director of Security, an SRO would plan lockdown drills for the schools. I, I think we've pointed this out, five of our schools are within the City of Beacon, one is in the town of Fishkill. So, you know, that would be a different thing there. So I wanted to go through it quickly. I, I didn't want to just sort of read everything. I'm sorry for the kind of like boring nature of the slides, but I just wanted to provide just like a kind of a basic understanding of it. And I, you know, I admitted at the beginning, I don't have a ton of professional experience with school resource officers. Just kind of randomly, I haven't been in districts that have had them. I obviously talk with a lot of colleagues who do. Beacon is one of the few or only districts in the Hudson Valley that does not have one. That said, like I said at the beginning, I do think embarking on this is something that would require at minimum, a lot of input from you all, but, you know, beyond that, input from the community in some sort of way, like suggests in the research. It's not something that's personally my call. At that experience eight years ago, roughly around this time of year, regarding like that proposal. Like I said, I've put a lot into with the principals, with the security team, with Mark. A lot into making sure our schools are as safe as possible. We talked about that at the last meeting. So this is just sort of basic understanding of SRO. I'm happy to answer questions if you have them, or I may come back to you with them. The one thing I don't have, except just a little bit of anecdotal stuff, is like just like a super clear, here's what every other district is doing. I did mention we are one of the lone districts that do not have like at least one. And districts that have both a Director of Security and SROs and security staff in Duchess County, that would be the Poughkeepsie School District has those three positions. Most districts don't usually have a Director of Security and SROs and not, when I'm saying that, I'm not, you know, I'm not talking about people's jobs. I'm not talking about cuts or anything like that. I did talk about the overall budget of what we do at the last meeting for security. Usually things aren't super round like this, but it's almost exactly a million dollars. And so that's, that's, you know, pretty sizable budget, but we feel really good about how we allocate that. So all that said, I kind of looked to the board for like next steps with this in terms of what you want us to do or talk about at the next meeting, perhaps in December or?
Yeah, so I think let's, let's have a discussion now. And I mean, this has certainly brought up some questions for me. So let's have this discussion and then maybe at the end of that conversation, we can sort of decide on a timeline, like what we want to do at the next meeting. Do we, will we feel comfortable enough at that meeting to have a vote to say whether or not we wanted to continue pursuing this, you know, as a, as a line of inquiry, or if we want to just leave it alone for now. And I can kick off the questions. I had a couple. And I, I think these are questions you, you would be able to answer. So the SRO would be supervised by the law enforcement agency?
They're ultimately, right, usually.
And then, but who on site would be responsible for supervising them?
Well, I mean, ultimately their supervisor is like the law enforcement agency. The principal and myself would be giving a lot of feedback to. I keep saying the law enforcement agency. It would be the City of Beacon Police. So, but just, and, and and I know Eric, you have professional experience with it. And if it differs, I think most of these arrangements are still, the person is ultimately supervised by their, whatever their structure is, like the chief of police, you know, just because that, that's who their employer is.
Okay, so off-site.
Like we're paying for the service, but, but they're, you know, they're part of a union, like all of that stuff, like they, we can't really change that.
Okay, okay, got it. And then does the SRO make the decision if an incident is a threat to safety or how does that work?
It depends. I mean, if it's something that's like a, like there's an imminent threat, right? They would just step in and do what they need to do. I mean, that's not something that happens all the time. I'm not trying to be scary with what I'm saying, but certainly they would just jump into action. We work with law enforcement a lot at like a game. And at a game, like they will come to us and say, do you need support with this? Do you want us to do any, like they talk to us before they do anything. That would be the same for like a school day with the more kind of like not an imminent threat. Like I hate using that language, but like, you know, so if they see like an imminent safety issue, they would do their job, but like something else, they would talk to us.
They would ask.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any, does anybody else have any questions or comments they'd like to jump in with?
Well, I just don't know what, so where, where are we going from here now? Like what's next step? So are we looking at whether, whether we're pursuing, are we looking at budget numbers or, you know, what's our thinking of where we're headed? Because we're getting later now. We're getting into December. In a month and a half, we'll be at budget time and we'll have to make some decisions. I mean, I'll just say, I wasn't, when I brought this up, I wasn't really considering eliminating the Director of Security. I was thinking of them working in tandem with one another. I was possibly looking at maybe, maybe either reducing or changing the way the security staffing is, you know, within the district. I wasn't thinking of eliminating Mark's position because I think that the Director of Security does a number of different things than the SRO. The Director of Security to me is is kind of working behind the scenes and doing all that stuff, covering games, covering the hours at the middle, at the middle elementaries. You know, the scheduling purposes. To me, the SRO is providing a more safer building, whether it be the middle school and or the high school. That's kind of what I was thinking. And Mark is a former police officer, but is not a police officer at the time. So that was kind of my thinking of the Director. I wasn't thinking of eliminating it at all.
Right. I mean, I, I, we put a lot into building that position. So you know, if we, if this conversation goes further, I'm not advocating for that either, you know? But I, I'm in agreement with Eric. I just adding it on to what we, what we spend. I think, you know, like it's a tough budget year. We all kind of know that we're potentially a tough budget year. There's still things we want to do. Every time a principal's up here, I'm going to ask if you all don't, like what are you thinking? Is on your wish list this year? And they're probably all really prepared to share that. We can't do it all, but there's some things that I'd like to see if we can try to do. So I don't want, if we went this route- So I don't want, if we went this route, I wouldn't want it to be, well, we're not gonna do this because of this. And I don't, wouldn't want it to be framed that way. So we, you know, I would have to work with staff to see how do we fit this into like that budget, really? And I, I'm not, again, I'm not trying to like get people worried about their positions and all that kind of stuff, but that would be something that at least I would feel better about doing.
We don't have to cut someone is to get this job, right? To get the SRO, do we have to cut somebody?
Well, I mean, it would be, an SRO would be like a ten percent increase in the security budget, roughly. So we typically don't increase, you know, I mean, sometimes there's like a, like student needs that make us make a big jump in something, but it, it would be in addition. So I think, I, I forget who said it a couple of months ago, but like I, I, if this is a, if, if this is the path we go down, I wouldn't want it to be, we're doing this instead of this other thing. It would be new money. If we just added it on, it would be new money, right? So like, you know, again, and I'm not trying to be sort of argumentative with the idea right now, but Corey talked about college and career counselor. Brian Sultus is probably gonna say nine-period day, which is, you know, a couple of or more positions. Like, you know, the elementary folks have no needs and are totally fine, just kidding. But like they, they're gonna have, you know, some needs that they bring to the table too. So like I would want, you know, I speak super highly of Mark, I mean it, so I'm not talking about his position either, but I think we need to sort of figure it out through that, if this is where we went.
Is anyone bringing this as a need?
What's that?
Has anyone come to you saying that they see this position as a need? Like, from any of the schools, principals, any, any, what's, I'm just wondering, I guess why?
Incorporating the feedback that was mentioned earlier in the proposal of getting feedback from the community. Do we have any at all yet?
I mean, I haven't directly asked for it, it was in part of that board letter that went out, but it was kind of at the end of it. If I asked for it super directly, I would get it, you know, so we could do that. You know, our middle and high school principal, without, you know, I don't like speaking for people, but they certainly have issues from time to time where, you know, they see the need for it. That said, they also like kind of work with our existing framework. We do have a pretty short response time in the city of Beacon to an event, like, you know. So, I had, Mark Thomas would always say, again, I'm not speaking for him, but he would always think this is a need, coming from his perspective. But I'm not, I haven't been openly asking people to, you know, this hasn't been something that I've been saying, tell me what you think about it, like in prior years.
I was just saying, have, have multiple people come to you and asked, said, mentioned this as a need, or no?
I mean, no, but.
I'm just curious.
I mean, it could come quickly, if I ask, right? One way or the other, right? Like, people have different opinions about this. And I, I think one of the things though, that I do want to say, and this is sometimes like an issue with polling in general, not that I'm polling people, but like, if you just say the thing, a lot of times people are like, sure. But if you say the thing and you say this instead of that, which I would never do, but like, that changes people's opinions about things fairly quickly. And I, I obviously wouldn't be coming to you and saying, well, it's this or this, like, we've never presented a budget that way. But there, if we're adding this on to our security budget, there's gonna be some decisions we would make regarding this in terms of something we don't roll out, or, you know, some, unless we're finding the money for the position within the current security budget.
Do we have like an estimated, I have three questions. Do we have like an estimated cost for this SRO? What would the restructure of security look like? And would this definitely be for Rombout and the high school? And then I'm piggybacking off that, I'm sorry. Would this person be split, where we'd need two individuals, one for the high school and one for the middle school?
I don't, you know, we, we kind of decided, I had a brief conversation with the city manager and the chief of police about this. We decided not to get into like formal budget conversations. However, my understanding of how it would work is you pay for ten of the twelve months of a person's salary, but you're, you know, you're paying for everything, so it's not just their base salary, but you're paying for all the benefits and things like that. So, you know, I was estimating one hundred thousand around there, right? With all of those things.
So they would technically be employed by the city of Beacon?
No, the, they'd still be employed by the city of Beacon, but we would be paying. So, they have a way of doing it that you pay for every single aspect of the benefits package, including FICA and all that too. So, you know, first, for sure, it's not, not that the person's salary is this much, but for sure it'd be, it'd have to be around a hundred thousand-ish. So I've always been kind of operating with that as like a budget estimate. I haven't engaged in like a formal, here's how we would restructure thing. I think if we needed to, we could come up with that plan in probably a few weeks. I don't have that. Again, that's my recommendation to try to do it within our current staffing, kind of what Eric said. Some version of that. And then, I, I would, I would, I would only say one, since the schools are across the street from each other.
Is it typical to have an SRO in a middle school? What's the norm? It's a, it's a high school thing, it's a both thing? Would we have it more focused?
Depends what district you're in.
So in, in the districts in the, in the area that have them, where are they? Both?
Arlington. Wappingers.
Not, not, I, I meant to say whether they were in middle school or high school, that comparison.
Arlington, Wappingers.
In both?
Yeah. In Wat-, in Arlington, we share with, with the middles-, elementaries. So they spend some of the day in the middle, some of the day in the elementaries, they, they share. So we have two, two middles, we have three SROs. We actually have budgeted for four, but we're looking for a fourth. We haven't found the fourth one yet. So we have one in the high school full-time, one in the middles-, we have two middle schools, one in both middle schools, but those middle schools also work on their feet are elementary schools. So they have three total.
And do you have a Director of there too?
We do, yeah, he works through Alteris, the same company that we have. I think he's actually joint Alteris and us, I think, I'm not sure how he's paid, but.
You know, Wappingers has made a big effort to put them in, not all their elementary schools, but some of their elementary schools. That's not something I would advocate for. I don't, I'm not gonna go further into that, like I, I, I mean, you know, reading like the best practices over the last couple of weeks. If, if we embarked on this, I think you would start really small and not, if, you know. So I would just think one would be part of that. I, I'll do a little bit more thinking about the restructuring part, but. You know, like I said, at, at the beginning of that document, it, I think it's like page two or three. It's like, you know, really gather feedback from the community. And I would think we could have a couple of ways of doing that that I think we should think about doing, a survey, or, I don't know if survey is the right way to do it. We haven't used thought exchange in a really long time. That could be not the greatest way to have this, but like just, or just something where we're really directly asking for people's opinion through some way or another.
I do think though, I mean, kind of what you said, like, it's really hard to ask this question just by itself, because it's, that's not how I want us to make this decision. And, and I also do wonder, you know, I feel like, I, I think I'm not like violating anybody's privacy to say like, we haven't, that's not something that's come to the board a lot, like securities concerns, which to me is a sign that it's actually been working very well, as it is. And I, and I know that at a certain point, you know, we won't have Mark anymore, and we'll have to figure out what to do with that role or how it would change. But the other thing I think is like, I, I really would, if we were to do this strongly, want to stay within the current budget. And I, I really believe that more eyes and more bodies is good. You know, so if we would had to eliminate like two security positions in order to afford the SRO, I think there would be an overall loss there, because you just have people in the building interacting with the kids and, and, you know, kind of like, I, I feel like that's how we, we begin to understand someone's having a problem, or there's a, there's sort of a bubbling up conflict here. So I think like losing, losing those positions would actually be a really big loss. You can't expect one person to be in all the places that two people can be. So, I, I think we do really need to look at the numbers here, and, and I know you're saying, you know, you don't want it to be like this or that decision, but it may come down to that for this budget. I sort of feel like all the, you know, all the emails that we're getting for, as board members, and you're getting as superintendent are just like the biggest warning signs I've seen since I've been on the board.
All the state agencies have been told to keep their budgets flat this year.
Yeah, so I just, I, I feel like we really do need to keep that in mind with everything we decide this year. Yeah, that's, I mean.
I mean, just to go back to a question, I, I don't know if I can say this very articulately, but it's sort of like, are people asking you about this? You know, I have felt, I have felt confident the last seven years in what we're doing is working, so I've never thought of bringing this to you all, or whatever board is in front of me. I think I mentioned this in a prior meeting, where this comes up the most is after, you know, again, I'm using language I don't typically use, but a major school shooting, a mass casualty type event. That's when I'll get, I, I think I probably get those emails more than the board does, but I will get a fair number of emails, like, why don't we have an SRO, kind of type emails. And then, and that's when I usually take that opportunity to work through, here's what we do do, and, you know, we have all these things in place, and da, 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 da. And, you know, I don't know if the person is convinced or not, but that's typically when the concern happens. You know, is when, is when there's something really tru-, really tragic in the news, and.
And that's when the SRO would step in?
I mean, that's, that's, that's the thinking, right?
That's the key.
If they're, well, it's the key, if they're in the right place at the right time, and it's, it's.
Well, but it's also preventative. I mean, if, if I'm thinking of maybe doing something, and I see a city of Beacon police car parked in the front of the school every single day, that to me is preventative, and I think that we're, the goal is to try to prevent something from happening, hence why almost every school district in the Hudson Valley has some form of an SRO. I mean, we could talk, I mean, just as small as Haldane, tiny, small district, they have a full-time SRO on their campus all day, from eight in the morning till three in the afternoon. You know, so I, I think that's really what it is, it's just being preventative so that, God forbid, anything was to happen, that maybe that would prevent something from happening, knowing that there is somebody there when the kids are here on an everyday basis. That, that's, that's how I'm viewing it. I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm not trying to say we need this over a, a reading program, that's not my point. I'm trying to say that, I'm just saying that I think that, I think it just makes things safer. That's, that's kind of where I'm coming from, that's all.
I think I, I, I hear what you're saying, I understand that perspective, and I also think about what Chloe said about, it'll make some students feel safer, and it'll make some students feel less safe. I think it was Chloe who said that.
She did, I think.
Yeah, and like, you know, I keep coming back to that as well. Like, if what we're doing is, is working within the district, and if, you know, we're talking about a big, a big hypothetical, but that we're also talking about making the students feel safe, and we're, you know, we're talking about responding to sort of like a culture of care within the district. Like, I think all of those things are, are important as well. I do feel like, you know, we've had this conversation for a while. We've had a little time to digest this information. And I don't want to cut the, the conversation short, but I did want to say that would everybody feel comfortable after we've had time to think about this presentation, and then Matt provides a little more information at the December meeting, to vote at that meeting about whether or not we want to continue pursuing this or table it? And then we can go from there. And we can continue the conversation now, but I just wanted to throw that out there to say like.
So to vote in December, is that what you're?
Yes, yes, to sort of take this.
After his next presentation?
Think about it, yeah.
I think it'd be helpful to think a little more about the budget aspect for me, and then I could, think I could, would. Could do that.
Do you feel like if there was a discussion about the budget aspect at the next meeting, you would be prepared to?
I think I would, I think so, yeah. I mean, yeah, there's a lot to think about.
I know, I know, I know, it's a big question.
I, I think I'd be right, I think my question is like, why? In my two years, we haven't voted on like a specific position in like any department. So it seems like a, not a small decision for the district, obviously, but it seems, trying to understand why it's a board decision instead of like a staff leadership decision. So I'm, I'm just trying to place it within like the board responsibilities, and like I, I don't think we're talking this much about like a college and career coordinator and like voting on whether, you know, what that setup would be. So like, why, why is this a decision that we're making?
I think it's a good question, that's probably one of the ultimate questions about a board. I would say for this, it differs from a school position in that we would be embarking on a pretty complex legal process with another municipality, so to speak. And so that's something that I would never feel comfortable just kind of embarking on without board direction. So I think that is where it differs a little bit than like, than like me saying, like, we really want another reading teach-, you know, like, so that, because it's, it's a lot of legal resources, it's, it's a lot, just from what I understand and what I have a little bit of experience, it's a pretty massive process with a lot of legal. So that would be what I would say, I don't.
No, I mean, that's, that's a better response than I.
Because I, 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 I think it's, it's a great question in, in the sense of, it's a, and it's really cool you guys think about this stuff. It's like, what, what is the process behind what we're doing? And I, I, this was not something I was planning on bringing forward. Our main thing for security that I was thinking about was in the Capitol project, these new entryways to the school that we'll hopefully get done this summer. And that was like the thing I was most focused on, making sure we got done. And I've talked about why, right? Like I, we designed this thing seven years ago, and I felt good about it, and just kind of kept moving. This has come from a board member, right? Eric's brought it up, like I've tried to prevent a little bit, or present a little bit of background information, but yeah, I think I would need direction from a majority of the board to then go. Because like, the other part of this is, the city of Beacon may not be prepared for this. They may be like, oh, we might not be able to do that until January of next year. You know what I mean? There's like all these things with this that I don't know yet, but I don't want to do all of that work, work without like a sort of a direction. And there could be something that there's sort of points along the way to, I don't know. This is a really complex thing, and I, I know, I don't think we fully have felt it. I think there's a lot of different feelings about this in the community, and I think we're gonna probably need to sift through that a little bit too. But, but maybe, maybe that has changed in eight years, I don't know.
I do, I mean, I also, I do think it is important to point out though, that I think one of the reasons we're discussing it so much is because it was brought to a board member, rather than, you know, most of the staffing needs are Matt bringing to us, like we, we see this. And so therefore, I think we do have to decide as a board, do we have consensus around this?
That's helpful, I hear.
Which with any, you know, with any, this issue aside, you know, if there's something else, if one board member's like, you know, I really want whatever, pickleball at every school or something like that, we'd have to decide.
Do we want to pursue?
Is there consensus with the whole board?
That's next month, I'm bringing that.
Could you bring something a little lighter?
Would we have, would we have community input by the next meeting?
I mean, the community, you know, it's been written about in the current, it's, we sent out the letter, short of an actual survey that was solely on this. short of an actual survey that was solely on this, that we have kind of tried to put out notice on it that we're talking about. And I, and I do, I just want to say also, I, I, I really hear you and this isn't like a simple decision to me at all. And, and I like kind of went down a rabbit hole looking for some sort of answer from the internet, which is always dumb, but, but there's just, there's so many examples of something happening, you know, God forbid, right? But something happening and, and they, there was an SRO, but the SRO wasn't there. Or, you know, and, or, you know, it ended up not being helpful. And, and so I, I don't want to feel that that is like the, you know, the foolproof answer to it. And I feel like I really appreciate what we have done over the last, you know, seven and a half years since Matt came of making our security system more robust, you know, our buildings through our director of security, but also through these mental health initiatives, all of these things. That doesn't, that doesn't, you know, stop some crazy person from the outside coming in. But I feel like, I, I do feel very proud of the work we've done to make our district safer. And yeah, so I, I don't know, I kind of, I get a little stuck on it because I just feel like it's expensive, it's not a positive experience necessarily for all people and, and it's not foolproof.
And when I brought it up, it was just to do this, to have this conversation. It was just, and if we decide not to, I, I totally understand it. I just felt it was worthy of at least bringing it up and discussing it as, because I had said that at the start, the security has done a good job. I'm not stating that, but I just felt it, I just thought it was a good time to have the conversation. If we decide not to, we decide not to, that's all.
I'm curious to see more data on, on effectiveness. I mean, it's hard to say, isn't it? Because everything's hypothetical. You know what I mean? Oh, nothing happened. Well, great, you know, nothing happened here. Nothing happened. We had one, we didn't have one. What's the difference? But to, to hear statistics from the association of this job description is a little bit maybe not my favorite source for information. You know, like I'm trying, and I don't know what that source is. I'm curious to see who else has data on, on prevention or maybe more accurate incidences that have been helped by this or harmed by this or irrelevant by this. I don't know. It, it is, and I know time's slipping by, but it's, it's, you know, to dig around and, and find out more, you know? That's kind of where I'm coming from.
Is it possible for, for you guys to get that data for us to, if it's out there?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I know there's some studies. I, yes, we can, I can share this with the board. I think the other one clear thing I hear is show us how you would do this within the budget of the security part. So I will ask some folks to work on that. I, yeah. Yep. But I, I, I'm appreciative of this conversation too. I, like I said, we spend a lot of time talking about safety and security. I, I think we're approaching this in a healthy way and we're thinking about a lot of aspects of this. And so I, I really appreciate that part of it. And so for December, we'll, I'll look a little bit more into studies. I'm not going to do a big boring presentation on it, but just sort of share that with you. And then we'll try to show you, here's how it would look kind of within our, or mostly within our current security budget and.
Will you, will you also be able to reach out to the police department to see if this is something they can even handle before we even take it any further?
Yeah, I think, I think, again, it was very brief. I mean, we talked to them a lot about a lot of things. But I think it's something that they would certainly be interested in talking with us about. I'm not certain it would be like, yes, like August 25th, like here's your person. Like there may, you know, it may be a little bit more complicated than that. That's the part I don't know. There, you know, as you all know, their budget cycle is January to December 31st, right? And so ours is, you know, July to July. So, so they have, you know, a different budget cycle than ours. I do, I do for sure feel that there's interest on that level. But I mean, we, we have a really great relationship with them. But it comes up in like informal conversations too. Erica's pointed out in a prior meeting, I don't know the exact number, but you know, there's, I want to say three or four of the newer hires are Beacon High grads. And I think that may be, you know, some of the interest too. But I will, I will do that.
I'm curious if, because they do need such specialized training, how long would that process be? You know what I mean? To get them to qualify for that at all?
Yeah, when I, eight years ago, when I embarked on the one-point-o version of this conversation, there was a, there was an officer, if I remember correctly, who they just put through a training program just to kind of, you know, be ready in case this grant came through. So it's, I think, do think it's pretty involved. So, but I, my sense is, you know, as Eric's pointed out, there's so many in the region. I, I sense, I don't know a lot about this world, but I would assume this training is something that's offered on some sort of regular basis. Because, you know, these other districts have to replace people and stuff. So I will ask about that.
So do we feel comfortable with this timeline that we've decided on? Okay, great. Not to get too meta, but I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the way this conversation has been going and actually learned stuff about our security department that I probably wouldn't have known. So that's been helpful.
You didn't have to say that.
It's true. And I just appreciate, because there are lots of forums to have really unproductive, difficult conversations and it's nice to have a forum to have a productive one. So thank you guys for going on this journey. Okay, so we have lost our student reps for the night. They were over it. So we will move on to the agenda. I did want to just note, there, there are no changes, but tonight we did start the meeting with our executive session. So this is going to be our general schedule moving forward so that attendees don't have to wait around while we are in executive session when we have it in the middle of the meeting. And if that changes, then we can, we'll note it in the agenda. But that is our new schedule that we're, we're trying out. All right, I guess now we are jumping into the superintendent's report.
Me again. I'll be super quick. So we just wanted to show you, I, I'm not going to do the best job of unveiling this, but any day now, we're going to launch the new homepage for a new and improved website. We're kind of just working on one, one or two last details with frontline. So the arrows point out some new things on there and I may not be able to speak to every single arrow, but we wanted to just have a clear dropdown at the top there of like things that a parent or families want to easily access. Skipping down to the bottom, right under the banner, we have like the district mission envisioned. What we want to do there is then just say like, here's the link to our strategic plan. Here's the link to our beliefs, you know, like just, just have that right front and center. You're not having to like dig around. The, the dropdowns, if you click on one of the dropdowns, there's a picture along with like what comes down, which is cool. So you see Crystal there with a student, like, but so it pictures with the dropdown and we've kind of, some of the dropdowns currently are a mile long and we tried to decrease that. And then you see in the, the right bottom corner there, our, just in full honesty, our news and announcements in the past was just sort of a garbled, I shouldn't be negative, but it's just kind of a garbled mess of like random things that I was probably putting up. So what we've instead, we've tried to really clean that up, have a picture with like whatever it is we want people to click on. Some of it's driven from me, some of it's driven from other departments. But we're just not having like kind of that random news and announcements thing. And like that is like another example of just like the newest things that would then go into it, right? Okay. As I said, I may not be the most qualified person to do this. So I think what this is showing is you click on one of those news and announcements and then that pop-up comes up on the screen. So it, it looks, I don't use the word elevated. It's elevated from our current website. That's a new word for me. And, and then the bottom, the, this, this part is not going to be fully done with the launch. We think the launch is going to be any day now. I'll announce it in an email, but we're also super excited. We think this part will be really locked into place probably by January, but just a really involved and detailed district calendar that parents can, you know, sync up with their Google Calendar and we're excited about that too. It's, it's about halfway there. We're just working on kind of coordinating with all the schools and departments on that. So just to back up, just a clean, more friendly look, our mission and vision front and center with some like really key links to the important work we're doing, clear dropdowns, you know, better pictures, better news and announcements. I really like the little box that pops up there with the information and then a better calendar. So the last part, back to the mission and vision thing, I sent you, I tried to take everything we've done over that strategic plan, all those presentations. We tried to put it into about 20 slides. And so at the December meeting, I know we have a lot of other things to talk about and a school's presenting, I think it's Sergeant. But I'd love to get some sort of that or the January meeting because I'd love heading into 2026 to have like, here's our plan and goals and that kind of stuff, like right there on the front page too. And just quickly, to, just want to give a huge shout out to the Beacon players. Little Women was this weekend. It was really, really amazing. And, you know, it's like close to a hundred students involved in every aspect of the play. And it's just so cool to see, when you look at the playbill, like they're, the students are running the lighting and the sound and not just, you know, the stars on the stage. And again, this year, the orchestra pit was almost completely students. Again, I think the only two professional musicians were string players and the rest were our kids and they sounded amazing. So the whole thing was amazing. I want to give them a huge shout out. And I'm starting, I published the winter concert reminders for everybody and I'll always give a plug for those, like just, you know, if your child is in elementary school, go to the high school concert or go to the middle school concert. Probably one of the better things I did, I, I did it for my job, but as a dad too, because I could sort of see, you know, like that end result. And the middle school and high school concerts are really strong these days. And so I really encourage folks to go to those too. Those will be on our fancy new website along with my updates and everything like that. But that's all I have for my update.
That's great. As somebody who uses the website every day and not just the parent portal, I am very, very excited. So that's great. Okay, so moving on to board comments and committee reports, Catherine?
I just want to say that I also very much appreciate the conversation that goes on here with everybody. I think it's, we're all rowing in the same boat. We all care about the exact same thing and it makes me feel good to, to be able to talk about this all with you guys.
Thanks. Semra?
Thanks Cory for a great presentation with a feature of Roman. And thanks to Foundation for Beacon Schools for that, that great support. Thanks. That's it.
Alrighty, Chris?
Yep, just echo the gratitude. Did, did you want to do a show from finance and audit?
Yes, sorry. Thank you. I do, when, we're, are we not, we're not meeting on the 11th, are we?
I think we are.
Yes.
December 11th. I can't, I can't meet on the 11th.
You were gonna, were you gonna call in?
What time is?
Five thirty?
Five thirty.
Right, am I right?
I think in a text you said you might be able to call in.
I think I, I can. I'll be on the train, so I'll just probably listen.
Okay. Is that okay?
Yes. It's okay with me if it's okay with you.
Okay, so I can set it up. I have everybody else saying what they can.
Okay.
The 11th at five thirty?
Yeah.
Is that five forty-five? Five forty-five?
Okay. Oh, was it five forty-five?
That's right.
Okay.
And just for folks tuning in, that meeting is going to be moved into exec session. If I, right? That, that, just simply because we're reviewing the audit of the technology systems and that can't not be, that absolutely cannot be done in a public session. So that meeting will be in exec for almost the entire time. With facilities, while I'm on this, we probably, December, January need to.
We were talking about one before the December meeting, so we might be able to do that.
Okay. And we've been in talks with Perry that he stays on in some sort of advisory role and not completely goes away. So we'll be able to update the committee at that one.
That's great news. Levon?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Eric?
No comment tonight.
Alrighty. Meredith?
Thanks for that great presentation, Cory. Really exciting to hear about all the things going on and, and it just feels like you're really making an effort to meet all the students where they are, which is really heartening. Chloe's not here anymore, but I want to thank her for telling us about the Unified Bachi game, which I did attend and it was really heartwarming. And I was even invited to play, but I was too embarrassed because I don't really know the rules. And I also attended, my husband and I had a night out. We went to see Little Women and it was fantastic. And the, the stage was just incredible, the, the set and all the talent. And then the last thing is there are some policies on the agenda, I think there's eight. And one of them is actually to remove a policy from our policy book. This is our community relations policy. And we're, we are recommending to do this because when we were reading through it, it was just not really a policy, it was really more goals and it just didn't feel like it belonged in the policy book. So, so there it is on the agenda.
Yeah, and it was a really old, it was from like 2015 and the attorney was like, you don't need this. So since it was a goal and it's sort of reflected in our goals anyway, we're just getting rid of it. Yeah, so I want to echo that the high school presentation was great. I am like so excited that my son is there. I'm so excited for my younger son to go there. Like there's just so much, there's so many options, there's so many possibilities. And like, it just feels so expansive and I love that. I wanted to also talk about the Dutchess County School Board Association meeting. I wanted to first of all note that the in-person meeting for Dutchess County School Board Association is happening Thursday, December 4th at 6:30 at the Dutchies, Dutchy, at the Duchess Bosie's Conference Center. It will be a dinner and it'll include a presentation from Patrick Longo. He's a NISBA staffer, but this is something separate. He's doing this presentation called Under the Surface, We're More Than Just Our Personalities. And it's about the influence of undiagnosed or undisclosed disabilities on personal and professional interactions, including in a school board setting. So it sounds like it will be really interesting. The in-person Dutchess County School Board events are always a good way to meet with other school district members, like board members, and sort of get a feel for, you know, their experiences, the issues that they're dealing with. It's just a great way to sort of get a snapshot of the county, of, of education in the county. And I always find it very informative. I also wanted to talk about the last DCSBA meeting. A rep from Austrep Associates was there, basically just talking about the coming budget. And he talked about the projected $2.3 billion gap in the state budget and that the comptroller has projected a three-year gap at $34 billion, primarily due to Fed cuts that could eliminate up to 10% of the state budget. And, you know, and then the other messaging, that all state agencies have received a message to keep their funding level. But then he also said, but it's an election year, so education may see an increase. So there was a lot of like, reading tea leaves and nobody really knows what's going on, but there's like, it's definitely going to be a year to watch. And it was just interesting because he, he has a lot of, he's done a lot of work in Albany, so he's kind of plugged into the conversation. So it was an interesting conversation. But I just wanted to put that out there, sort of. But I just wanted to put that out there, sort of, uh, you know, where everybody's heads at right now. So that's it for me. Moving on to the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Are there any items that any board members would like to have removed from the consent agenda?
1309.
1309. Any others? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve 12.01 through 16.08 minus 13.09?
So moved.
Chris, second?
Second.
And Meredith? Comments or questions? I just wanted to say thank you for all the donations. Especially thank you to um, Foundation for Beacon Schools for all you do for the district. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, passes 7-0. Can I have a motion to approve 13.09?
So moved.
Chris, second?
Second.
Second by Meredith. Comments or questions?
Abstain.
One abstention, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Are we doing a second?
Oh, are we doing a second? Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. So can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to, um, for uh, to review the employment history of a particular individual? The board does not plan to return.
Uh, so moved.
Second?
Second.
Second by Levon, comments or questions? All in favor? Aye, passes 7-0. Good night.